I'm Michael Brown from Montgomery College Television and I'll be your moderator today. We are at the Cyber Lab in the High Technologies and Science Center on the Germantown Campus, and Dr. Pollard is looking forward to hearing from as many of you as possible today. As always, if you're nearby, we'd love to have you come over and join us. We are in HT 230, and we encourage everyone to ask questions, to offer opinions, to introduce new topics of discussion. Now, if you are watching online, you can email your questions to TownHall@MontgomeryCollege.edu. You can also send them in via Twitter @MontgomeryCall using the hashtag #AskDrPollard. We're going to try to get to as many questions as we can during the time we have today. You can help us do that by keeping your questions short and make sure you introduce yourself before you ask your question. Dr. Pollard, take it away.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you all. Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and jump right in because this is certainly a great space for us to be in. So I want to talk to you a little bit about where we are, and then we'll go right into questions, and then we'll end, I think, in a unique way today. I think cybersecurity, most of us can agree, was a word that many of us did not even know a decade ago. In fact, something now that's so pervasive in everything we do. We talk about banking, we talk about credit cards, we all know the realities about cybersecurity, and defending against such attack has really become one of the most significant job fields and growing and emerging areas in our country. In conjunction with this trend, we decided to hold our meeting here today to make you aware of this. I know Joe's feeling some kind of way because we didn't broke up his space to make it. If you ever have an opportunity to come back, you will absolutely be freaking out when you actually see the live attacks that are happening. We're static right now, but it's actually rather amazing to see that. Enrollments in our Cybersecurity and Information Systems Security Degree Program at the college has grown over 200% in the last four years. In order to serve our students, the college has increased our cybersecurity opportunities by opening this cybersecurity lab in 2015. The college and TACT grants funded the lab and the virtual infrastructure in the lab because students have access to many pieces of software to help them learn, which trains our cybersecurity students to become competitive workforce workers in the future and also helps them to have hands-on experience. I think that's the thing that's most exciting about this. These sophisticated tools allow students to practice the skills they need to help fend against cybersecurity attacks. So far, we have graduated from our Cyber Advantage program classes totaling 52 students and have two classes totaling 35 students who are currently enrolled in this particular program. This is an intensive nine-month, two-semester program funded by the federal government, and it provides information technology and cybersecurity skills to students to improve their job prospects. The Cyber Lab is also used by computer science, computer engineering, network and engineering students. This lab is also used for students beyond the college as well to train and compete against other students. For example, students from Montgomery College Public Schools use this lab to practice and participate in the nationwide Cyber Patriot competition. During college's spring break, Montgomery College hosted over 150 high school students from MCPS high schools at its annual cybersecurity competition, and these students test their skills against other students and competitors who are all looking for jobs in the future. Some of the brightest minds in cybersecurity are right here in Montgomery County. This lab has also helped us track scholarships for students. Last month, three MC students were awarded scholarships through the National Science Foundation's Cyber Corp Scholarship for Service Program. These students are very fortunate in that they also have all tuition expenses paid for in their final year here at Montgomery College, plus two additional years at the University of Maryland Baltimore County, plus an annual stipend of over $22,000 a year. I don't know about you. That is something that's very exciting. I wish I had known about this when I was in college, all right? The winners will also participate in career fairs, workshops, and summer projects through the NSA. Very good. It's easy to see how well this program is designed when you think about this lab, how well it was designed as well. I'm very proud of the vision and the dedication they took to create this, all the folks who were visionary in making it happen, and we're also very excited about the fact that we're preparing students to step in high-demand careers that all of us are dependent upon now and into the future. So thank you, Joe, and our Germantown campus for hosting us today for the Town Hall meeting. Looking forward to engaging conversation. And we're going to start off first with questions from the audience. We have some that have already come in, and then we'll go directly onto a special part at the end, okay? Mike?
All right. Any questions in the room before we... Okay, we've got one over here.
You're going to love this.
I hope so.
I know. Because it's you. So I'm Kelly Rude, and I teach world history here at the Germantown Campus. I do want to tell everybody that we're having a campus-wide two discussions about the elections, and we've got signs up. This is fast turnaround. I think each campus is doing that. My question is that I'm a humanities person, and as we emphasize the obvious need for cybersecurity, for science and technology, and all those kinds of things, how do we also make sure that these students are very well-versed in the humanities, especially looking at that map? How are students know what's going on in world history, world cultures? We are such a diverse college, and yet that doesn't necessarily mean that students know about each other's cultures or about their own cultures or history. So how do we do, your love, humanities, and make sure that these students and all of our STEM students get that importance?
Thank you, Professor Rude. Kelly and I talk about these topics a lot because I think, as you talk about and mention, I come from humanities. My background is in English. I started off teaching English, composition, literature, women's studies, African-American literature, you name it. And there's something intrinsic about humanities that it teaches us about our humanity. It privileges stories and human experiences in ways that allows us, if we're very fortunate, to learn something about the world we live in, the people that we live in and live with. One of the struggles, though, and this is something that I am trying to figure out, how we recast this conversation, because I completely agree with you. We need humanities to help people understand the social geopolitical issues that are happening. When one sees these types of cyber attacks, we need to understand the ways in which this affects the lives of people. But I'm starting to reject the premise that it's either/or, and this is something that I hear us do a lot within academia. We tend to create these false bifurcations, and we say that you're either faculty or you're administration. You're either a humanist humanities, or you're in the sciences, or you're either in student affairs or you're in academic affairs. You're either soft skills or hard skills. And I have found, and I'm believing more and more, as we become more sophisticated and think about this world, most things are about the middle, and most things are about the integration of those things in many different spaces. I think a lot about that, even in this space, about cybersecurity. We know for a fact that you have to have a certain technical competence in order to do this work. When I look at these machines behind us and I see the coding that goes into that when I talk to those students, but to give that work they're doing a context and to help them understand the impact that has on social, political, class, we understand, and you learn that from the humanities, which is why we have privileged within academia. When you have an associate's degree, you have a core general education that gives privilege also to the humanities and social sciences. It helps you learn how to communicate effectively, and I think it's our obligation as an academic institution to help elucidate that for our students, so they are not seeing us talk about these things as either/or. Very few things in life, and maybe because I'm getting to a certain age, I'm starting to realize are not either/or. Most things in life fall somewhere in between, and most things in life are, to be quite frank, a blending of that. So I'm always going to say, and I'm going to push myself to embrace more a concept, and I have very robust conversations with Dr. Rai and Margaret Latimer and you name anybody I can talk, who help me understand cognitively what happens when one has competence in math and science and technology, and how I'm reading my Atlantic each month and all my different publications I get this powder by my nightstand. I understand the world better, but I know I understand it and empathize and sympathize better because I have a background that gives me understanding how to interpret stories, to understand how things impact people, to understand the human experience. And I think if we worked as an organization to merge those ideas more fully and reject the premise of bifurcation, I think it would be really a good idea for our students. Thank you, Kelly, for the question.
All right. We have a question here in the front row.
Hi, Dr. Pollard. I'm Amanda from the Germantown Library. Welcome to Germantown.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Due to budget constraints, those of us who met the criteria did not receive our recognition bonuses this year. In light of the economic climate, both now and in the future, for institutions of higher learning, would the college be interested in instituting a recognition leave program similar to those offered to employees at George Mason and Old Dominion University? I would consider this a budget-neutral program, and I would also hope that it would not then replace the special recognition award program we already have.
Sure. So thank you for that. I think, Amanda, that's a really great... Each month, she always gives me great questions here, and I think in terms of this, I'm unaware of those programs at George Mason, but I'm certainly able and happy to receive that feedback. I think there are multiple audiences who could give me some feedback on that, so feel free to advance a proposal, whether it be through the staff council, whether it be your campus council. I'd be very happy in seeing that. But one of the things I want to be very thoughtful of, too, is that, I loved how you phrased that, the special recognition bonuses that had been a part of the compensation. Each year, the board makes a decision, and there was, again, going back to the humanities question, there was a political environment, and there's also an economic one that we had to be very thoughtful about. I heard someone make a comment the other day, "Well, we didn't get..." I can't remember how they phrased it, but basically, in effect, "We didn't get our raises." And I said, "No, you actually did. Every employee at the college had a salary adjustment," I think for four people who didn't. "Every employee had a general wage adjustment. Every employee had one. What did not happen was the COLA." And very realistically, our county council said, "These are very thoughtful times we're living in. We're raising property taxes. We're going to give you more money for any number of different things, but what we cannot do is justify to taxpayers a COLA adjustment when there has not been a change in the cost of living." So we're going to support the college, providing a 3.5% increase to compensation for all employees starting the next fiscal year, which is more than the national average. Put things in context, but as a result of that, our board said, "We're going to be good stewards, and the resources that we normally would have allocated to this type of program, we're not going to be able to do that this year. We want to demonstrate to our county executive, to our county council, that we're good citizens and good owners of the resources that they've invested in us." So they made a different decision. I love the idea, though, of being innovative and thinking about how we can use non-monetary decisions to help provide those opportunities, and how do we recognize and reward a performance in the organization? Love that idea. Look forward to hearing some feedback on it. Yes, sir?
All right. We have a couple of really interesting online questions.
Oh, boy.
So we're going to go to this one. This is from Jill Kronstadt, Associate Professor of English here at the Germantown Campus. She's writing on behalf of her 8:15 a.m. English 001 class. They've been working on a civic engagement assignment, and they came up with a student question for you, Dr. Pollard.
All right. I like that.
"Could we allow outside vendors to sell food on all campuses the way Rockville has a Starbucks in the Student Center? Our class also discussed food court types of kiosks or even inviting food trucks to campuses. We want more food options at Germantown." Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Professor Jill. I tell you, the thing I hear the most about... Sorry, I hope I didn't blow the TV's ears out right there. The thing I hear the most about from students inevitably, number one is what?
Parking.
Parking, and number two is food service. And then there's a whole other set of threes, fours, and fives. So I appreciate that, Jill. I think it's really important to get students engaged around this idea of civic engagement and helping them advocate and learn how to do that, which is one of the things I'm actually doing this semester as well. So I have lots of folks. We got your question, and thank you for sending it ahead of time. I haven't actually looked at the response. We had some people, so I'm going to read it to you at the same time, because I know we do a couple of things. One is that we actually have a contract through Chartwell's through 2018, where we're in the process right now of talking about what our future relationships should look like and what are the needs that we have as an institution. So as a result of that, Ms. Donna Shenna, who's leading up that work, has also formed a food service student advisory group that's been developed to collect input from students. So Professor Jill, if you could have those students send information to me, I can make sure I send it to Donna. I think we've identified two students from each campus to serve on this advisory group, and they will be able to give feedback, and we'll also be working with the governance system, because our student council is for real, though. They ask and advocate and ask really good questions and have accountability measures in place for that. So we're going to make sure that we continue to advocate and put through them feedback. We know that we've had some food trucks that have been brought on campus in the past, I think just at the Rockville campus. So we're going to work at trying to figure out how to do more of that at the other campuses, and that has been done through Chartwell's, who's been a good partner with us, to figure out what that could look like, how do we spread it to all three campuses, as a way also to use our community engagement centers or possibly even our WDCE areas. How do we do that as well? So that's part of what this community, a student advisory group, will be doing with Ms. Shenna over the next year to help us prepare and develop some better strategies. But thank you for that, and I hope that's a good response for the students and for you.
All right. We have a question right here.
Hi, Dr. Pollard. I'm Sarah Ducey, College-wide Chair for Integrative Studies. I'm hearing from a lot of faculty and students about the need for conversations around the outcome of the elections, and that really, in fact, we need to be listening to each other and learning from one another. My real request to you, and probably the answer isn't an immediate one now, but to come out fairly soon, is what are we allowed to do as a community to respond? We have some very nice forums that have been set up with open discussion and facilitation. Those are going to be important. But there are also some people who are concerned about the possibility of protests or walkouts. There are things that are possible, and I'm wondering how we're planning for that. Thank you.
So thank you very much, Professor Ducey. So what I think is really important in this conversation, I know we had several questions that actually came in in this similar thread, that how do we, as a college community, talk about these issues, recognizing that there are multiple perspectives as it relates to the election? There are some who are very concerned about the outcome and are wondering what the implications are for them, particularly our students who are dreamers. I've heard from them already. I've heard from some of our Muslim students who are very concerned. Students who have a strong commitment to social justice are very concerned about the implications. So I hear a lot of those students contact. I also hear from folks who are saying, "You know what? This is a political reality that we embraced, and as a result of that, how do we also ensure that an academic organization such as our own provides space for both of those conversations and probably others to accompany?" I think the short answer for me is that I think Montgomery College has to keep doing what we do very well. We are always practicing radical inclusion, and the reality about that is that radical inclusion means you create space for multiple dialogues, even the ones that make you uncomfortable, right? So I think about this for my own son. He has become a political beast in the last year. I mean, this is a kid who watched every debate with me at dinner table and the day after the lecture. He said, "Oh, my God, Luanne Bennett lost, too?" This is what he said, right? And we all, we kind of lived in like Luanne Bennett. I'm like, "Oh, that's Virginia." But he has been... We live in Maryland, right here. But he's been watching the commercials, and he's like, "Oh, my God." But it was deeply personal for him, deeply personal, because a year ago in his class, and some of you have heard me tell this story, he came home and he was troubled. And all of us think we have brilliant children, and I have no doubt that everybody's child is, but what I know about my child, he may not be brilliant, but he is compassionate. He's a kind boy. And he was so troubled. He came and he said, "Mama..." And it's his temperament. He had tears in his eyes. I said, "What's..." He said, "Muhammad says he may not be able to come back to school," right? And he tells me about Muhammad, who had just moved here from Egypt not too long ago, who's a practicing Muslim and his family, and he was very concerned that Muhammad may not be able to come back to school. And right next to him, he says, "And we're talking about Muhammad," and then Maria tells us her story that she's afraid that she's not going to, because her family's not supposed to be here, right? And he said, "Why would somebody not want them here? These are my friends." And he, I mean, his spirit, his spirit was troubled. So at that moment, he became a political activist. I have no doubt that my child is going to become some type of activist, because that was that, you know, those defining moments? So I'm very curious what the next generation is going to be called because of this. These are these moments. But what I realize as a parent, and what I think we have to do for our students, is to create safe conversation spaces to talk about them, but here more importantly, also how to do that with our students and with our employees, because people are hungry for a place to understand how to interpret what happened. So what's happened in the classrooms? I know a lot of faculty actually dedicated their first couple of class sessions after the election to talk about that and to give the disciplinary context that they could for that. I know that we've had, I've walked past a couple of our open spaces and seen students sitting down with faculty and staff, talking about this and really talking about it. I teach a seminar. I know today I'm going to have to spend some time giving them spaces, because it's on activism. So I know I got a whole bunch of little activists up in my class who want to actually figure out how to become engaged. So as I think as a college community, several things we can do, create public forums for these types of conversations, use our classroom time where appropriate to do that, rely on our student affairs and student services and student life people to help us create more out-of-classroom conversations for that, engage in community dialogue, because what I know for sure, if anybody can help heal the community, it will be the community college. We're the place where all these things have happened before. Every time somebody new has come into our community, we've been there to help respond. Anytime there's been an economic struggle in our community, we have been a part responsible. If anybody's going to do it, it's going to be us. But we have to have courage, we have to have civility, and we have to be willing to be vulnerable in this and realize that we are different perspectives, but we have to create space for all of that to happen. I love the idea of trying to figure out some other things, and I think, maybe I'll talk with, one, I think there's some legal things we need to be very thoughtful about, so I can have legal counsel put something together as well. And then I'll also, and to be, you know, there will be student activism. We got through it in the '60s and '70s. We'll get through it in the 20... What year are we in? '16, right? So it's going to happen. So I think there's a part of that, and that's a part of their experience. Yes, sir?
All right. We're going to take a quick question from the web, because it dovetails precisely into what we were just talking about. This is from Carrie Shaw, Associate Professor here on the Germantown Campus. "Post-election, two of my American English Language Program students recounted to me stories of being victims of hateful speech from self-identified Trump supporters at local Germantown businesses. One gentle Asian young man was on the verge of tears. Of course, I feel deeply for them and feel this is an issue regardless of political leanings. How should I support these students? Is there some way that we can help students to report such incidents? I would appreciate your guidance."
I love that question, because that, when you're invested in your students' lives, even if it's happening outside of the classroom, you want to figure out how to help them navigate that. So I think part of what we can do is make them aware of, and maybe that's in this publication or that we can send out, resources within the county that people can connect with. We have an Office of Human Rights in Montgomery County to understand the non-emergency number for police. I think a lot of people should have that programmed in their cell phone. I have the campus, campus safety offices of every campus in my cell phone. I think people should know to have that and be able to give that. We have some other resources here on campus that can help people have spaces to explore those issues and to talk about them, and then how to make those connections to county and community groups that might be able to provide additional support for them. I think the other thing, and this is a really critical one for me as well, is how to help students channel their pain, their fear, and their vulnerability into also resiliency. So how to, one of the things, whenever I felt vulnerable in my life and felt pained and felt taken advantage of and hurt, I tend to figure out, okay, how do you bounce back from this, dearie, in your own power? What can you do in that space? So a lot of what I am talking to young students, our students about, is about self-advocacy. How do I help you know what resources are available for you in the community? How do I help you? You know, I had a student who texted me, you know, I have several who do this, and she said, I really kind of go into your point. She said, "I want to do a protest at the college." And so I, you know, I said, "Oh, boy." You know, so I'm listening to her, and I said to her, I said, "Well, help me understand what you want to protest and what are the intended outcomes of your protest." And I remember she wrote to me, she said, "Well, I really just want to make people know that my story is here, that Montgomery College has been a safe spot for me, and I want to be able to explore that." I said, "Well, here's some options." And I talked about having her go through student life and to explore that. Here's some resources in the community." I said, "But make sure you're very clear about what you're trying to do." So part of what I wanted to do is to not let her feel further victimized in that moment, but allow her to say, "Okay, what is my political agency in that space?" And I think that's a large part of what we can do in our classrooms and our spaces with students, help them know what resources are there for them, and how to channel that feeling into something that allows them to feel that they're taking their power back. It is not an easy thing to do, and I think part of what we also do is the most important thing you did is to let them be heard, because I think oftentimes in our spaces, our students don't often feel they can be heard when they have these experiences, and they need to know that Montgomery College is a safe space for them and that we will continue to do that. Our county council and our county executive, I think just yesterday, issued a, what is it called? Steve, where's Steve? What's it called? Some type of resolution about Montgomery County remaining a place of civility, safety for the community, and I'll make sure we send that out to the college community, because I think that's a good affirming thing for students to hear as well. Thank you.
All right. We have a question in the room?
That's her question. Yeah, that's her question. That's why I've been making eye contact. That's all right.
All right. We have another online question.
Okay.
This one in regard to Rockville Assessment Center.
All right.
"They are understaffed, resulting in 48-hour delay between when the faculty submit an exam and when a student can take it. In addition, limited hours make it difficult for working students. More trained staff are needed." This is from David Newman, President of the Rockfield Part-Time Faculty Union.
Thank you, Professor Newman, for your comment. This actually was first brought to my attention most recently, I think last week or two weeks ago, at the Student Affairs colloquium, which was raised by Professor Zarin in that space. And I've had subsequent conversations with Dr. Brown about this. So let me do a couple of things I think are important. One is that Dr. Jamon, is he in here? He's going to be doing some additional communication about this. There's a couple of misnomers here, and actually, one of the things that Monica and I were just talking about is that we would contend that the offices are staffed appropriately. They have appropriate staffing levels. The difference, though, is that they are being used now more than what they were intended to do, right? So we have more things occurring and being used by faculty in very critical ways, but that is not what the original intent and design was for that. So Professor Newman, what we're going to be doing is a couple of things. One is that we have to have a substantive conversation about mission, purpose, and intent of those centers. Secondly, is this the appropriate use of them, in many of the ways in which they're being used? And then to have a conversation about staffing, because one of the things we know is that for many years, our assessment centers were staffed with temporary with benefits, and as we have continued to meet our obligation to reduce the numbers of temporary with benefit employees that we have, that we have then, in a lot of cases, hired permanent staff to replace those TWVs, but at the same time, we've also dispersed staff to ensure that we have equitable service at all three campuses, because the reality is that we did not have that. So there are, I think, some fact-checking that I might offer that needs to be done in that space, but then also, and last but not important, we're going to go back and do some work on that. Anything you might add on that, Dr. Brown? I was perfect. Put that down in the minutes.
All right. We have another online question. They would like you to give an update on the new building.
Oh, okay. Which new building?
It just says the new building, so I'm assuming it's the one off of Shady Grove.
So let's talk a little about central services. I'm assuming that's what that is. We are in the midst of doing, finishing construction on our central services redesign. So, John, if I get too off-track, wind me in. We started construction in that facility a few months ago. It's scheduled to have his first set of folks moving in in February of this year, that being those folks who are vacating a lease that was institutional advancement will be moving facilities, and those folks in 40 West Goody will be moving in first. There might be some other people moving right after that. Most of us who are in Maniki would not be moving until the end of the semester. That was actually requested by the work group that's been looking at this issue, because trying to move in the middle of the semester, they thought was too disruptive, wait until after commencement is over and be able to do that. That was actually requested by the work group that's been looking at this issue because trying to move in the middle of the semester, they thought was too disruptive, wait until after commencement is over and be able to do that. So we're in the midst of that. We have a work group that's helping to manage the change process as it relates to this and spending some time being very thoughtful about communications. So there's a website, updates are put to that regularly. They did some really neat things to bring the actual furniture that's planned for that space, to let people see them, get feedback. We're thinking about wayfinding and how to make sure that that particular building and the folks who are there stay connected to the primary work that's happening on the campuses and W D C E and our community engagement centers. So there's a lot of work that's being done to help manage the change process and to be very responsive to that. There was another question that came in, Mike, and I apologize, I'm gonna jump to it because I saw it in the list. So this, when I wake, I had a board meeting last night, so I got home about eleven, eleven-thirty. This morning I woke up and the first thing I would do is turn over, look at my phone to see if anything happened, no crises. But I had the questions that had come in. So I saw one of them actually talked about the change process and how we're managing, I think there was something about seepot in there in one of the questions. So let me talk a little bit about this because, and then I want to move into a student panel that I have in here today. One of the things that's interesting, most things, if we, I think the governance system about a year and a half ago developed a change process. And they had these five or six steps that the institution should seek to go through in implementing mass change within the organization. There are some things, though, that that will not be used for. If there is the prerogative of personnel decisions, that will not go through a mass change college-wide process for that. If it is something regarding to board responsibilities, which is the sale, acquisition, and purchase of real estate property, that is not something that's going to be going through a change management process. If there are ways to talk about other things that are happening within the institution and plan for that, we will do that. So we've had a group of folks within the institution working on a change management team. They actually started meeting before we even announced the process that we require in the building. They have a work group that's spending time working on this. They've helped with the furniture selection, planning of the building, website, you name it, communication, they've contributed to that. So if someone feels that they haven't been a part of that process, that troubles me, particularly if you're also responsible for that process, that's something that troubles me even greater. There are certain decisions that will be made based on the purview of the folks who are gonna be held accountable for the decision. More often than not, when we have the time and the ability, I have put more things in the governance system that have been placed in the governance system probably within the last several decades of the college. But it's important to know there's certain decisions that can't be put there. A lease termination, decisions about the financial future of the organization as it relates to the acquisition of real estate, that's not something that could have gone through there. And there was other privacy issues and all types of things go on that process. But how we have prepared for this move, how we engage people in the move process, that has been, matter of fact, I don't even know. I don't go to the meetings because it's not, I let other people plan it. They come back and tell me what's happening. I get the minutes, I review them. I got, still have to choose the furniture for my office. Haven't done that, I know. Don't tell the people. Ally is probably mad because he's waiting on me to get back to him. So there's a whole process that's going into this, but there's a lot of stuff I have no control over. The committee has made these decisions. So I'm hopeful that we're all recognizing that it does occur. Change occurs. Part of our job is to figure out how to respond to that, how to make it vibrant, how to make it something that's responsive. But if we're gonna sit back and wait and mourn something that has changed and instead of figuring out how to move forward, I don't think I got enough to say on that, right? Y'all read me? Yeah, I held back a little bit. Did you catch me? Because I was ready to go there, but I held back for a second, which is unusual for me. Yes, sir. I'm supposed to go to my students now, right? So let me tell you what I did today. Thank you all for those questions. I'm sure there'll be some more and we'll make sure we add them to the list for the next Town Hall meeting. You all know this spring, excuse me, this fall when we started, we had a different, for our seventieth anniversary, we did something different for our opening meeting. And we had a group of students, over a hundred students come in and meet with us and almost a thousand, y'all come on up here. This ain't gonna be fancy. Just finesse it around me. I'm just gonna come and sit up here with y'all. And we had a group of students who came and talked to us about their experience and had some very thoughtful questions about what was happening there. And we put a report out about three or four, three weeks ago, that kind of summarized what we heard in those spaces and so forth. So today, I thought I would take a little bit of time in my Town Hall meeting to actually continue to give privilege and honor to these voices of students. But I cheated. I cheated because I got some students who I know very well and some students who are in a class that I'm actually teaching this semester. I'm teaching a class with Dr. Beverly Walker-Graffia, you are a member of Beverly, who's now the President of Mott Community College. We're actually doing a class in distance learning. Ten students at Montgomery College, ten students at Mott Community College. And we have been looking at the Flint water crisis, but also looking at the parallels to the Washington DC water crisis. And all of this moving toward an issue of social activism and how does one talk about leadership and how does one think about what's happening? These are three of my star pupils who are in this class. I'm gonna have them introduce themselves momentarily. And I sent out an invitation because we're on a little text thing that you got, what is that thing you have as group me? So they sent out a text message. I went in and I said, okay, hey, I need three of y'all to come in and talk with me. Asked for four, but I think other people in class. And we have class this afternoon. So I asked them if they would come in and talk about their experiences. They got four questions, I think, late last night to help them think about it. And we may go off script, which is highly probable knowing me. But I asked them to come in and talk about their experiences a little bit and continue to ground us in this experience of knowing and listening to students' voices. So with that, I'm gonna grab my little spot here between y'all. And I'm gonna go to you, Carlos. If you can go first and introduce yourself, tell us your name, your major, and how long you've been at MC.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Carlos Everheta. I've been coming to MC since 2013. I feel like I'm overstaying my welcome a little bit.
Not at all.
I was general studies, switched over to landscape technology, and then I've switched over to environmental science and policy, which I'm gonna transfer over to at University of Maryland. And what else?
Why'd you take that class I got?
Oh, why did? Let's see. Because I wanted to learn more about crisis leadership and activism and just being involved in, in like a crisis situation.
Awesome, that's good. I just asked you that. All right. Sure now.
Hi, my name is John L. Malone. I'm the President for the Student Senate at Tacoma Park Campus and I'm also a Hillman Scholar. My major is actually industrial organizational psychology. I'm transferring to University of Maryland in May. I've actually been here since 2014. And anything else?
How did you get here to Montgomery College?
Oh, I actually got here through the ACES program. And so I was at Blair. I was actually the first cohort that actually got picked up. And at first, I was really confused by the program. But after a while, I started getting to my coach and Mr. Jose started helping me out. It's been one of the best experiences I've ever had.
Thank you. Ms. Anik.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anik Chakunte. I'm from Cameroon. I came here in this country three years ago. I speak French and my major is chemical engineering. Thank you.
Wonderful. So we'll ask her to speak up a little bit if you can. She's quiet and that's okay. But I, so these are three of the students who are in my class. And I've had the opportunity to talk to them about activism and leadership and what it means to be a member of educated society. So let me ask you this first question, and this, it may seem kind of odd, but it helps give people grounding in the community college experience, which many of the folks in this room already know a lot about. But how are you paying for college?
I want to thank you first. And I'm really happy. I'm really happy. I'm really happy and grateful to be here at MC because I come from a low family income. So the FASFA helped me to pay my school.
So you're getting Pell Grant or any other type, any scholarships?
No, financial aid.
Financial aid, though, state and federal financial aid. Very good. Thank you. Sure now.
So the way I'm paying for my tuition is actually the Hillman Scholarship program. They pay, you know, sixty percent of my tuition, but then also the rest came from my parents. And so that's about six or some dollars that I paid from the rest of my pocket.
So up until me entering the Hillman program, also a Hillman entrepreneur with them, I was paying for school out of pocket. I was working full-time, part-time, and also had a landscape company on the side to try to like pay for it all. And with the Hillman entrepreneurship, they helped me pay for two-thirds of it. So it's a big help.
The reason I ask that question because for a lot of us, we do a lot of work fundraising for students. Probably in the last three or four years, we've raised about twenty-five million dollars. And when I say we, because it's a team of folks who do this, in private philanthropy for scholarships to help support students and advance them. And then we've probably raised about another fifty to sixty million in grants that oftentimes is a part of that is scholarship money for students as well. So this is important when we think about the faces because most of the students I have the privilege of working with, I see that they are working one or two jobs. Oftentimes, matter of fact, I was at a restaurant meeting with a donor yesterday. And in that lunch, the person who sat us down was taking a class at Montgomery College and she's taken one class a semester. And the first thing I kept thinking in my mouth and in my head is, how can I get her to take two and then get three? Because I know if she's taking one class a semester, it's gonna take her a long time to get done. And the odds against her success increase each semester. So this idea of having, whether it be state or federal financial aid, institutional aid, and other types of scholarships is so critical for these students. Carlos, let me give you the next question. So when you think about the things that have made you most successful here at Montgomery College, whether it be our faculty, our programs, our services, what would you say has been really the most contributing factor in your success at Montgomery College?
I would have to say the staff relationships. They've, they've always like wanted to help those that want to be helped. If you go out and you go for the opportunities, they're gonna be there to help you and lift you up. Staff relationships, they help me, they make me want to come to school, actually. Just having interactions with happy people give me that, give me that inspiration and that motivation to come in.
I love that idea, interactions with happy people. So that whole idea, I always tell people, smile sometimes when we doing the work. We, you know, we doing important work, but we have to have some joy in the work that we're doing. Anybody you want to give a shout-out to?
Shout-out Steve Dubic. Shout-out Professor Razavi.
Very good. All right. That's good to give shout-outs.
I would say what's really helped me was the peer honesty from a lot of my faculty and staff members that actually helped me out. ACES, they always tell you the truth. Well, my writing was really bad, it was a non-credit class when I first started. And they told me if I didn't improve, you know, I would end up be taking these classes multiple times. So I really had to step my game up and actually take advantage of that. So one thing I really did was get involved, go for help. And then I got involved with student government, which really helped me, propelled me even further on the Tacoma Park campus. And then on top of that, a lot of different faculty and staff, I started connecting with people, networking with people because that's very important, especially at MC. Building those connections where they actually can give me scholarships. I actually talked to Dr. Benjamin, who actually said, since I'm going into psychology, he said he can actually get me certain things when I go to UMD because he has those connections. So it's definitely reaching out to your professors and talking to them, even though you may say, oh, I'm just gonna be here for just a semester, those same people can be lifetime friends with you forever and on and on. So most definitely it's been, you know, tremendous help from, you know, the student council, from some people giving me so many different opportunities that I would never had if I went to a four-year school, so.
That's pretty awesome. You know, it's so funny when you mention that lifetime friends. I remember a student who was in my second semester of my first full-time job at the College of Lake County, Heidi. And she found me on Facebook, first about seven or eight years ago when The Oprah Show was first on, she sent me, or was still on, rather, she sent me an email, found me out of the blue and said, she's talking about The Color Purple. You need to be, and that was one of the books we read. And then now she's a Facebook friend. She's a mom with two kids. She's doing great things in her life. But I met her when she was eighteen years old, a student in my class. And it's pretty exciting to have those connections. And now she's navigating life and we talk about different things in different ways. The relationship has changed. That's a really great point. Anybody you want to give shout-out to?
So many, y'all.
All right, you get two.
Get two.
How many did you say? Two. Two, you only get two?
Only two. All right. Shout-out to everyone at Tacoma Park.
Cheater!
I'm not gonna get grilled.
Smart man, Anik.
I think what makes me be a good student at MC academically is the good relationship that I have with my, with the faculty, especially my instructor. I had the opportunity like to, because of my good grades, to be a Phi Theta Kappa member and a Renaissance Scholar honor. And I travel a lot through conferences because of the relationship that I have with my faculty. Thank you.
Very good. So just people are asking about the mic. The mic is actually to allow MCTV and the recording to hear. It doesn't help amplify our voice and anybody's voice in the room. So I don't mind talking loud. So I'm gonna ask y'all to try to talk up a little bit so everybody in the back of the room can hear you as well. So I'll start with you, Anik. The next question is, I've talked a lot about in the college community, this idea of radical inclusion. This idea that the college will meet you where you are and we take very deliberate aim to make sure that every student, regardless of background, ability, language, that they find a space for themselves at the college and that they feel valued and welcomed. If you don't mind, how have you experienced radical inclusion at Montgomery College? Have you found spaces and places that make you feel particularly valued as a student that have helped you be successful in what you're doing here?
Yes. I feel like regarding the gender and diverse, Montgomery College is a diverse institution. So and as a student in it, I'm always in contact with many students regarding, especially foreigner. So I think that we feel comfortable here at MC.
Thank you.
I would say for sure, one thing that's really helped me with radical inclusion is actually building those friendships with people that I just didn't know. So sometimes I would just talk to people and say, how are you doing? You know, I'm standing in line for lunch or I'm at Munchies or wherever I'm at. Or even in class, you know, there's some students that you would never expect to talk or you think they're always quiet, but once you get to know them, they open up to you. So I think one thing that's really helped me is just, you know, talking to people my personality and just trying to go out there and just meet people where they're at, most definitely.
Awesome. Carlos?
You guys mentioned earlier, the, just like having the safe space to talk about what you feel and not feeling ridiculed for having your opinion. You're actually like encouraged to bring forth your perspective on things. I think that's really good and a sign of the radical inclusion. Another thing I've noticed is there's like quiet corners, like spread out around the campuses. And they're like a spot for people to like meditate or to pray throughout the day. And I just like, it's just a sign and it shows that like MC cares about other people with like religion, like different religious backgrounds and stuff like that.
I would agree. I had never thought about that, that idea of space as also being a part of creating radical inclusion. We talk about the safe spaces for conversation and interaction and the ability to have people that have programs, but this idea of actually having space where you can just be alone is critical to a student's experience. Have you all ever experienced a moment where you haven't felt that we were being radically inclusive as an organization?
Not my knowledge.
No? Good. Let me ask you this. What, and I love the fact that you all represent such diverse backgrounds and having, getting to know you, I know a lot about your stories. So I'll start this mic this way with you. I'm gonna ask you that last question you had. Have you had any experiences at the college that have enriched your appreciation of international perspectives?
Yeah, the first day of our Hillman Entrepreneur class, we went around the classroom and everyone just like named off what languages they spoke. In a class of thirty-one people, I think it was like thirty-three or thirty-four different languages that we all spoke. all spoke. So I thought that was pretty cool.
That's pretty, because we have at Montgomery College, we know right now, this semester, I think 157 countries represented in our student body and the languages will probably be almost that, if not more.
I would say one thing, especially being on Tacoma Park Campus, there's a lot of students from different parts of Africa and Latin America and all over the world in general. One thing that I love about, you know, just MC in general is just the diversity, especially when I came to Montgomery Blair, there were so many different languages. That's where I first got my first taste. When I came to MC was just a whole nother change. Even professors had different backgrounds, no one was ever the same, which I always loved. I would say one thing that I really appreciate about MC is just how they just include everyone into the conversation, which is so important, even looking at, you know, upper management everywhere, you just see so many different faces, which is just amazing.
Very good.
One thing that I really like here at MC is it is a place where you, you can feel like home because of the diversity.
I love that point, Anik, and this is why, when a lot of people talk to us about the international programming that we do, we've been very fortunate, we have our Global Humanities Institute, we have our, a number of other programs that focus on that. We've had some really powerful international experiences, whether it be travel for students, travel for our faculty, actually helping other countries prepare and create community college systems. A large part of that has been about this idea of how do we continue to build the diversity and build that competency within our own employees as well as helping to build that competency in other places so that when students who come to us from other countries can see their faces and see their experiences and stories and know that that's valued, when students who live in Montgomery County, come from Montgomery County High Schools and come here through ACES program, the other can see their faces and stories reflected here and have resources to support that. And then you hear students who are finding themselves and honoring their experience and finding different majors, you changed your major twice, didn't I hear you say?
Three times.
Three times, so that's a part of the college experience and that's a part of helping students really maximize what they do. And that, that to me is when we think about the complexity of the American community college system and the real sophistication of Montgomery College, these are where these competencies lie and why we do the work that we do to help create these opportunities for students. So we've got nine minutes left, I have more questions for them, but I wanted to give you all, anybody in the, in the audience, if you have a question that you might like to pose to our outstanding, my, my, my students today.
I'm interested to hear from each of the students, as you prepare to transfer to a university, what kind of transfer scholarship support you have gotten or need.
Great point. Anybody?
I would say for one is the Hillman. I know, I already went to the Hillman, I always went to the Hillman Building at UMD and I already saw the support group that they already had there, I think they said in total about 100 and 100 some students already there. And it was amazing seeing all those different students from, you know, PG Community College and MC Community College and just how they were just so embracing of, you know, us as being the younger cohort coming in. But also, right now I'm applying for other scholarships as I speak, but that's what I have for now, about 33% paid for.
Wow, 33%. So that's impressive, the fact that you've been able to make those connections with your transfer institution already, you have a cohort that you're following and they've built the relationship, but also that you're actively having resources to help you with that transition. Very good. What you got?
I got Hillman.
Good.
That's all I got so far.
That's good.
It's a start, but always looking out and trying to get more scholarships and see what else is out there. Because you never know what you're gonna get, honestly. I didn't know I was gonna get into Hillman, so I just took the shot and I got it.
Taking opportunities. Carla had a question up here in the front and then Anik, Anik wants to answer that and then we'll go to Carla. Go ahead, Anik.
I don't have any scholarship at this point, but as a Phi Theta Kappa member, I, I am no depend, according to my background that I built, I'm sure that I will get good scholarships.
Awesome.
You all are connected with programs that are supporting you and helping you be successful at the college. One question I have is, how did you hear about Hillman? How did you get connected with the, with the special programs? And how would you encourage your peers to do the same?
Great question.
Thank you for the question. I think the first thing that I recommend is the, having good grades and be involved. Yes.
I would say one thing is, ACES, the way I found ACES was, I wasn't doing too well in high school and my counselor actually said, you should look into this program, so I signed up. Plus it said it was free and there was free food, so I went. But from there with the student government, I actually took out on a limb, someone actually told me about it, a peer told me, said, hey, man, you should definitely look into this, it's a great way to build your leadership. And I think that's one thing that's very important, peer-to-peer conversations. I always try and engage other students in those different discussions because I think that's very important when you hear from someone else that's just like you.
I love that.
I learned about Hillman through my counselor. I went to go see where I was in terms of graduating and then I met with her, she said I would be perfect for this opportunity. I applied, ended up having to switch my major because of it, but I can't complain, I'm super excited about where I am right now because of, because of my counselor, I guess, is who I gotta thank.
Awesome. Out of curiosity, let me ask you a couple of questions. Of the three of you, how many of you graduated from Montgomery County High School? How many languages do you speak?
One and a half.
One and a half? One?
Three.
Three. How, will you be walking across the stage in May?
Yes.
No, next May?
Yes.
Hopefully.
Why is the hope?
Because I have to take a summer class.
Oh, okay. You can still walk across the stage in May with one summer class, okay? Because one of the things, I spend a lot asking them, how many credits you have, where are you going to be in this process, and most importantly, that you will complete your degree at Montgomery College prior to transferring to all these phenomenal opportunities that lay. So these are three of the outstanding students I get to spend time with and simply ground me in this work, remind me about when I'm meeting with the philanthropist, why I'm doing it, because I see their faces and their stories in the back of my mind. When we're out writing grants and trying to make the reality and talking to the team about why we're doing that is because of these faces here and also the faculty and staff that get to benefit from those experiences as well. So I thank you all so much for accepting the invitation. I get to see you in about two hours as we have class. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
We do have one more quick question, if you have time.
Yeah, yeah.
Hi, I'd be interested to know what the three of you would tell a friend or a sibling or a relative if they were trying to make a decision between going to community college versus going straight to a four-year university.
Great question.
I would say to make MC your priority or your first choice because based on my experience, I think I would have messed up at a four-year school and I would end up here anyways, so.
Start here, huh?
Just to start here and skip the, skip the first step.
Cut the middle man out, cut the middle man out. He's so funny.
The first thing I would ask them is, why do they want to go to a four-year school? A lot of times because of peer pressure. I think that was one of the biggest things that I really was trying to go to a four-year because of my friends, like, oh, I'm going here, I'm going here. And then I look back and a lot of them are back at MC because they didn't know what they really wanted from these four-year schools. I think especially if you don't know what you really want and you don't have the money, I think I really look, tell people to, you know, just come to MC, I even tell students, now even my siblings that go to Blair, I say, guys, look at something where you can actually take the steps, the baby steps, and then take that major leap when you actually find out what you really want. So that's what I always tell students.
That's great.
I recommend to start by the community college because first, it is cheap, it's less expensive, and the second thing is, it is easy to build a relationship with your, the faculty, your instructor, instead of going to a higher institution, a four-year institution.
Very key, those relationships are so critical.
Dr. Pollard, any final comments before we say goodbye?
So I will say, first of all, I want to thank these students for accepting the invitation to be here and thank you for allowing me to work with you this semester. It has been one of the highest privileges I've had this semester, so thank you all. In addition to that, thank you all for choosing to be here today. These town hall meetings are always, always very effective, I think, in having people hear directly from me about different issues and want to thank those of you who sent in questions, those of you who posed questions in the audience. Last but not least, we're getting into the last hall of the semester. So going, maybe echoing how we started off the semester, let's make sure we're taking care of ourselves and taking care of each other, doing that with civility, doing that with dignity and grace, and ultimately, at the end of the day, with a kind heart. I think if we practice more kindness as a society, we'd be in a much better place. And last but not least, make sure you cover your mouth when you coughing. Wash your hands, because there's a whole lot of, the people starting to sniffling in the coffin, I heard it earlier, and if you sick, stay home. Don't bring it to school. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, Dr. Pollard, thank you to the students and thank you to everyone here in the room and online for participating in today's town hall. I want to encourage you to keep an eye on the President's Corner Monday Message, also inside MC online, for all the information on our next town hall, which is scheduled for February. And if you want to keep up to date on everything happening here at the college, please follow Montgomery College and MCTV on social media.